And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the Tuesday, September fifteenth meeting to order with the court caller.
Counselor Olson, Counselor Fennessey, Counselor Bender, Counselor Sweeney, Counselor McDonald, Counselor Garfield, Counselor Finland, Counselor Herrick, Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck, and Counselor Esther Dahlbeck is excused this evening.
Okay, guys in Oklahoma, proceed, and I'll ask for the consideration of the minutes for the September first council meeting. Heard the motion at second, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried.
Item five point one is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the zoning code and map to rezone lots in the vicinity of John Avenue and North Thirteenth Street from R two apartment residential to C four central business commercial district.
At this time, I will call for a public hearing and ask those who wish to speak or against may to do so now. Those that wish to speak for or against may do so now, and for the final time, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the public hearing to close and ask the consideration of the council. For the motion at second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion is carried.
Item five point two is a public hearing regarding a resolution authorizing the following alleys to be blacktopped in 2016. Between North Sixteenth Street and Harrison Street, the east-west alley west of Coming Avenue, Eleventh and Twelfth Avenue, it's east between East Sixth and Seventh Streets, and B and C Hayes Court between Cedar and Hill Avenues. You do have a communication, an email from Tom Nancy in front of you this evening opposing alley number one.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing and ask those that wish to speak for or against to do so now. For the second time, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. And for the third and final time, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. Did you?
You want to come up to the mic here? That's okay. You state your name and your address. Turn the mic on right there. There you go.
Okay, my name is Jill Forton, and we live at the B and C Hayes Court between the Cedar and Hill Avenues. This has been an ongoing issue for us in this area. We actually live, our house, we don't access the alley, but four of our neighbors do there. And our street, our backyard bumps up to where the major damage is in that alley. And it is so bad that we have actually brought in almost sixteen truckloads of dirt to try to fill in our backyard so we don't flood. Our neighbor next to us, with the water that comes into that area, his, literally his basement wall is collapsing. The only fix that we can do is to redo that alley and that B and C Court area. I can't speak for one and two because I don't live there. I just know that if we don't get that part of Hayes Court fixed, it's just going to completely be eventually demolished with the amount of traffic that goes through there, the trucks that go through there, and more people are going to start losing their basements and properties. It's just, it's a swamp area in there, and that's why it's so critical that it needs to be fixed. So, you know, we're willing to put down our taxes and have all that done. We're just begging with you guys to let us have the work be done because Hayes Court is a nice area. We want to keep it a nice area, and we want the homes to stay in that area nice, so that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any discussion? If not, those in, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I think you only wrote it.
Those in favor, may, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, may.
Or in opposition to, I think you have to call it one more time.
I'm sorry.
Did you call it?
Three times.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Pleasure, the council. You've heard the motion at second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Item number six is a consent agenda.
Heard the motion at second, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried.
Item seven point one, Finance Director Vito is doing a presentation regarding the 2016 general fund budget.
Director Vito.
Thank you. I'm going to try to get it to move here for me. All the way to the end already. Motion to approve? Well, let's see here. Okay, bear with me, thanks. I'll start here. Okay. Let's see if this works. Page, the page does not work. Arrow, okay. Thank you, Jason. Okay, now we're ready. So, the purpose of our presentation tonight is to inform the council and the citizens on our, what's on our 2016 budget and give you some highlights of what we're expecting for the year. We've added in some visuals and some statistics to try to make it a little more interesting than just having a bunch of numbers here. And of course, we're here to answer any questions from you as counselors or citizens if we have any here. Two weeks ago, we introduced the budget, that's our statutory and ordinance requirement date, and tonight is our night for discussing the budget. If you don't feel comfortable passing it tonight, that's okay, we can bring it back on October sixth. But then we will, we will need to have it approved by that date just so we can meet our deadlines with holding a public hearing and getting the tax levy approved, and then the final piece is getting the tax roll to Douglas County to run the tax bills. Some of the highlights, the, definitely the biggest change relates to the Moccasen Mike landfill, and we no longer have the subsidy in 2016, so that's, I would say that's the largest change that we have. We have some net, what's called net new construction, that's the increase in the values of the community. It's, it's not really huge, but it's positive, so that's, it's a positive number, so that's good. State of Wisconsin definitely continues to play a role in, in our local decision-making, and what I mean by that is the levy limits, and they have been in place for, I think we're going on year twelve, since 2004 or five. We do have a contingency in this budget, three hundred ninety-five thousand, that is a little unusual to have a contingency that high, but a lot of that for this upcoming year relates to the fact that we no longer have the $500,000 landfill subsidy. So, that's a good piece of that. There are no planned service level reductions, so another way to state that is we can plan to continue the same services that we're currently providing. This is a snapshot of the total general fund budget from 2010 to 2016. Over those six years, seven years, it's a total of a 3.9% increase, not an annual increase. The annual increase is actually under 1%, it's .65%. So, we've been really, our budgets have been kept very flat due to levy limits and shared revenue, and I'll, I'll speak about that a little bit later in the presentation. Revenue, or shared revenue is at the same level as 2011, and I think it's the next slide, no, a couple more. I have a visual of what has happened to shared revenue over the last number of years. It's, it isn't, it's not going in the right direction, but I don't know that there's much that we can do about that. We do approach the state and let them know of the difficulties that creates, but I'm not sure that we'll get any traction in getting that increased. The tax levy, there are two things that we can increase our levy for, and only two things. If you have higher debt service in one year than the next, which is true for 2016 as compared to 2015, you're allowed to increase your levy for that. And also, the, the growth figure that I talked about early on, they give you a very small percentage that your levy is allowed to increase based on that growth factor. Other revenue sources are pretty much the same, and a couple meetings ago, Chief Panger brought some good news that the SAFER grant was renewed, and that doesn't, it doesn't affect the general fund, but it allows us to maintain the firefighters at a level of thirty-seven firefighters. And so, that's, that was very, very positive news. I see a question, do you want me to take questions now, or would you rather I hold until later?
No, that was an accident.
Okay, all right, okay, no questions, all right. Okay, all right. So, here is a good visual of our general fund. It's a pie chart, and you can see the two large pieces, the blue piece and the green or yellow, however you see that. Blue is our taxes, and the green is, the bulk of that is shared revenue, but it's also other state sources. They send money in our direction for streets and a payment for municipal services. But the point of this visual is to show you how dependent we are on just those two sources of revenue. They, they're just very, very large sources, twenty-five million of twenty-eight million of our budget just from those two sources. And so, when we look at projections going forward for the general fund, and we see that these two revenue sources are likely going to remain flat, that's where we start running into deficits in future years because we have inflation on the expenditure side, and it just surpasses what our, our revenue estimates are looking like. Here's the shared revenue picture, and back in the early, or I'm sorry, back in the late nineties, we were receiving some very nice increases. We would, pretty much based on inflation, we might get a 3% or 4% increase. And then we started to see a couple rounds of cuts come into place. First year was 2004, and the second round of cuts was in 2012. And the, the, the level of funding has remained the same since 2012. But again, we miss out on that inflationary increase, and with this being such a large source of revenue, we really do miss out on that, that increase. We've got a picture here, we send the tax bills out in December, and I think a lot of times, some people can make an assumption that it's all money going towards city services, but we know that's not true. The, the tax bill covers a number of different jurisdictions besides the city of Superior. It covers the school district, Douglas County, Wisconsin Indian Head Technical College, and a very small portion for the state of Wisconsin. And so, the city of Superior is the second largest category there at 35%. School district is at 40%, and the county at 22. I have handouts for this because it's probably too small to see for many, but the point of this was to give you an idea of what the average property tax bill is in the city of Superior, and then to break down what portion of that goes for city services. And so, on the bottom right, for the average home, it shows you what, what those households pay for each of the services. So, I'll just read off a couple or two or three of them. Homeowner pays $213 on average for police services for a year, $128 for fire services, and $181 for public works. Those are the, the three large ones. On the expenditure side, this is a visual of where the majority of our spending is. We have, the, the largest department is the police department, and then after that is public works and then the fire department. And the, the fourth one is the transfers to other funds at 10.8%. A good chunk of that is the, the annual transfer that we send to the library. And this is the same pie chart, but with dollar amounts attached to it. One thing new that, that I'm presenting tonight, it's not new information. The Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance has been putting out this information for many years, but what they do is they summarize some financial and demographic information of all the 244 cities and villages in the state of Wisconsin. We happen to fall within the population category of 17,500 to 30,000. There's nineteen municipalities in there, and Superior is the largest of those. And before I get into these numbers here, I, I want to just say that we could have very different numbers if, for example, we were doing a comparison of municipalities between, let's say, 20,000 and 40,000, or 25 and 50. But I just put these in here as an FYI for U.S. counselors. If there's anything that looks interesting, we can certainly expand upon it or do further research into it. And the, the number four item here is the police cost per capita. City of Superior is number one of the nineteen municipalities. And I, I think I'd like to have, in a little bit, have Chief Alexander just do, make a few comments about that and explain some of the reasons why that might be the case. So, for the other categories, general government, that's Frog's Department, Terry's, Mine, Assessor, a lot of the, the smaller departments. And street maintenance, obviously, is, is public works. Fire, number nine of nineteen in the group. Basic spending, I'd have to look in my folder, I forgot exactly what that category covers in operating, operating spending as well. But then when you go to other areas such as debt, we're actually a little bit more in the middle, middle area. Our general obligation debt, we're at number seven of nineteen, debt per capita, pretty much right in the middle. And as our, as is our, our property tax levy, property tax levy is in the middle. Oddly enough, our levy per capita is number eighteen of nineteen, meaning on the, on the lower end. Tax rate, number nine. Equalized values were a little bit on the lower end in comparison with this group of other municipalities. Shared revenue were number one. And back probably twenty years ago, the shared revenue formula was actually based on something instead of it being frozen like it has been since 2001. The city of Superior ranked really high because we had a high property tax burden on the community. And I think the rationale was, is if you have a high burden of tax, the state was going to try to help you out more with more shared revenue. And so, we are still number one of the nineteen in this category, very, very dependent on, on our shared revenue. And then the last statistic I have before I turn it over to the chief, income tax per return on the lower end, seventeen of nineteen. I'm going to turn it over to the chief to talk about the police per capita.
Good evening. Jean just asked me to kind of review why perhaps the police department budget is so large. I don't think it's unusual that police department and public service does reflect usually one of the largest categories of most cities budgets. So, in, in that aspect, I don't think it's too much of a surprise, but I did want to kind of put it into perspective a little bit. On the, the budget there, Jean's comparables are cities seventeen thousand, 500 to 30,000. When I look at crime, crime indexes for cities in this, in the state of Wisconsin, the FBI puts our city in a category of populations between 25,000 and 50,000. So, a little bit higher population base of comparables there. And when we look at that, the city of Superior, there's nineteen cities that fit into that category as well. And the city of Superior is fifth in population out of the nineteen, but our overall crime index is number one. And the crime index is basically number of crime incidents averaged to a population base, so you can kind of get a comparison from city to city. And it takes into account two types or two parts of crimes. There's the violent crime, which is going to be your homicides, sexual assaults, physical assaults, and, and murder. And then property crime is your part twos, which are going to be your burglaries, arsons, car thefts, and larcenies. And when we add that up, our exposure in this community is, is higher than, than most. And I don't say that in an alarming way to, to think that the city isn't safe because I do believe that the, the city is very safe, but we are a busy police department. We answer on average about 25,000 calls per year. We make arrests when we include adults and juveniles, near 3,000 persons per year. So, it's a busy community, and I think one of the contributing factors is that although we are a population of 27,000, we are part of a larger Twin Ports community that has a, probably close to 200,000 population base. And it's a very mobile society, and people aren't, you know, concerned with the jurisdictional boundaries. So, we do have a little bit higher exposure to, to crime and the criminal element here, and I think that, you know, is part of the reason. And, and obviously, our, our increased costs for service over cities similar to our size, our higher exposure to crime directly relate to the, our staffing needs and ultimately our, our budgetary needs.
Thanks, chief. Before I go on, and I am almost done, are there any questions on any of, of this or any questions for the chief on anything so far?
I'd like to make a couple points if I may, if you could go back to the, the slide where it says average annual property tax. We are often criticized as having high taxes in the city, whether the comments relate to the overall tax or the city of Superior. I asked Jean and Chris to do some of this work to identify the reality as far as the, the burden. And if you take a look at, for instance, Public Works, that $180 per year, 181 per year is less than an average, and the family, the average family pays for their, their internet and charter or whatever it may be in a month. So, for $180 per year, you're getting all the services of Public Works for less than what you're paying for your internet, telephone, whatever it may be for a month. Same thing with fire, or police and fire and so forth. So, the, the reason for adding this in is to put some perspective on the fact that where are you going to find that kind of service for that little bit of money? The second thing is, going back to municipal facts, Jean, the first one. We are, go to the benchmarks, I'm sorry. The street maintenance per capita shows that in that categorical area of 17,000 to 30, we're number three. But when you think of street maintenance in the community, we are, outside of Milwaukee, we're the, we're the largest community in the state of Wisconsin, square miles. I think we're 45 square miles, Milwaukee's 50-some, I believe. But we have about 350 miles of streets in the community and alleys to boot and this and that. So, it's, it stands to reason why we would be at number three, but even so, all that work is being done for $181 a year for the average tax bill. The other one, general debt obligation, we're, we're fairly low compared to the average community, and the debt per capita is low. With municipal property tax levies, this brings more proof to the fact that we are right in the middle as far as the burden of levy in, in, on the taxpayers. We're right in the middle of these communities our size and probably a lot lower than communities that are larger than us. And once again, the municipal property tax levies per capita, we're very low compared to that. So, I think it's a, a good piece of information for all of us to have handy when we, when we have to and do talk to our constituents as to the reality of what it's all about. Not to be defensive, but what service can you get for a year that's going to cost you $180? Like Public Works, for instance, you can't. You won't find it, so I just want to bring that up.
Thanks, mayor. So, there's a lot of, a lot of numbers there and stats, and what we really focus on though is looking at our bond rating, and we've got a lot of very specific information from our rating agencies that, that we focus on to try to keep our rating as high as possible. And, and so, Standard and Poor's has a, a rating scale, there are ten different categories. The highest is triple A, we're one step down from that at double A. We've been there for a while, I, I want to say maybe seven or eight years, and we, we hope to stay there. I don't know that it's possible to go to triple A because I think that has something more to do with over, overlying economy. And, I mean, if we get there, that's wonderful, but I think I would be very happy staying with a double A. In their definition, a double A differs from the highest rated obligation only to a small degree, and it basically tells investors in our bonds that we do have a good financial capacity to repay those, those debts. So, they, they rate us very strong, strong and adequate in a few of their key areas, very strong in budget flexibility, and that relates to a very good level of reserves, not too high, not too low. Our liquidity is good, we have cash reserves. Strong in budgetary performance, we have not run deficits since, I think it was 1992, with the exception of one year, that it was actually a planned deficit because we were transferring money from our general fund to fund some post-retirement benefits. And we wanted to get that established. They deem our management practices good or strong, and that we're strong in the areas, as mayor had mentioned earlier, our levels of debt, they're not, they're not too high. They're not overly concerned about our debt levels, and we get an adequate rating in the economy. And that is it? Questions, Counselor Dahlbeck?
Jean, I just got two questions and a comment. We provide services for the state, for example, do we set those fees or are they set by the state?
The state determines what they will reimburse us for. For example, we provide police, fire service, garbage, oh, garbage. Are we still doing some garbage to some state buildings? Unfortunately, we can calculate our costs for that, and I'll, I'll just throw out a number. They may be 600,000, and we get reimbursed at about 50%. So, it's not a very fair formula, it has been decreasing over the years, but they reimburse us somewhat.
Okay, the next thing was that point eight that we, of the taxes that we paid to the state, the state gets, does that include the landfill payment?
No, that has nothing to do with that.
All right, that's all I have. I think I ought to congratulate the mayor and Jean yourself and your staff and the department heads for putting together, I think, is a great budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. We hear that a budget for this year, while it may look good, and I'm not suggesting it's not because I haven't, but looking ahead- but looking ahead two or three years, is where a problem is going to occur. So while the oasis may be this year, it's probably time to start. And I understand everyone has said we've sharpened the pencil as sharp as it can get. I've heard that comment, and I don't say it's not true. And this is a good budget, but where are we going in the year sixteen? We know where we're going. We think we know where we're going. Seventeen and eighteen, maybe nineteen, are going to be problems. So to applaud this, and then next year, are we going to have to look at a five to six percent? And so how are we, we just can't look at this one-year budget. I don't think it's, we're being physically responsible just to look at this budget.
Exactly. And I appreciate your bringing that up, Counselor. There's a section of your budget packet. It's A1, page A1, where I've got the projections for the general fund. The column twenty-sixteen, of course, is highlighted for the year that we're asking approval of. But it also goes through the four years after that, through twenty-twenty. And I make the projections based on everything we know today, every service level we've got today, every revenue source we have today. And twenty-seventeen, it shouldn't be too difficult to balance that budget. We're looking at a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar deficit. However, things really change after that. Into twenty-eighteen, we're looking at a deficit over eight-hundred thousand. And this is if nothing changes, we're up to one-point-four million in twenty-nineteen and over two-point-two million, which is really hard to fathom, in twenty-twenty. And so I think the only thing that you can do with that is start preparing, maybe in a couple of phases. You look at twenty-eighteen, for example, and that's the year that you have over eight-hundred thousand dollars to find a solution for. And when you look at our revenue and you look at the main sources of revenue being the property tax levy and shared revenue, those are not two areas that we can tap into. So what does that mean? It pretty much forces you to look at the expenditure side of things, to balance the budget, and it has to be a balanced budget. So thinking of phasing this in, I would say every decision that we make should start focusing on twenty-eighteen and saying, how are we going to move in to an eight-hundred thousand dollar deficit and handle that? Now, we're fall of twenty-fifteen, so you've got a couple of years in there before that hits. So we'll be here two years from now needing a solution. And then the big one comes after that. I honestly can't imagine what will come in here and save this scenario on the revenue side. I just don't see anything.
But the contingency, or that's the word we use for revenue over expenses, I think, okay? It's three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, which is percentage-wise is nothing. Nothing. I mean, that, we could wipe that out in, I don't know what could happen, but that's not, if it's a contingency, and I realize we have others, but that's not much of a contingency. Three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, wow, that's, and so my point in all this is I think we've got to start looking at this budget. And I don't know where we look at it, but maybe there's some areas where we've got to at least start thinking about making some cuts because unless there's a revenue source like you, and you know, there isn't from where we are today. So I think we've got to be looking down the road here and take a look at this budget a little more seriously and see if there's something there. I don't, I'm not saying there is or isn't, but, so that's my comment.
I'd like to, I'm glad you brought that up, too. We've had very many discussions with regard to the forthcoming years and how to address it. The years that are forthcoming have some assumptions with regard to very little revenue growth because of mainly state shared revenue and low equalized value growth in the community. We're not an anomaly. Most cities that I've interfaced with, they've faced this issue long before us. And I know of one that's going to dig into their reserves just to pay existing services. But that's not here nor there. The problem is, is that, in my opinion, I think many of us believe that we need to, as a group of communities and counties, municipalities, local unit of government, we need to begin to impress upon our legislators and our cabinet member people that have control over these types of things the fact that going backwards is no longer going to be satisfactory for anybody. And I like to say, as go the cities of Wisconsin, so goes Wisconsin. And the cities of Wisconsin are not doing very well at all. So the answer, at least partially, is revenue streams or new revenue streams. We had a meeting yesterday about this very thing, Doug Van Andy and I and a few others, about getting our counterparts together to work with league, work with the Wisconsin Counties Association and others to try to turn this wheel around in Madison with regard to slowly inching back up the shared revenues payment for municipal services. And equally is to allow, through legislation and through administrative policy, allow the municipalities to control their destiny. In other words, we need more authority at the local level to be able to control this rather than just react to it. So those are the, what you've brought up is very good, and it's very appropriate because those are the challenges that we're going to be facing and addressing, starting like right now. So to make sure that some of these deficits, if you will, don't come to pass or at least try to address them through some revenue streams partially.
But shouldn't we project revenues somewhat conservatively and project expenses a little more leniently? If that's the word. And then if, we can't project our revenue that's not going to exist. Now, maybe they will, and I hope they do. And I know you're working hard at that, but the reality is that it doesn't look good right now.
Probably. You're correct. But with regard to the current budget, Counselor, I know that one of the first targets is going to be the contingency. And I would gladly discuss that, but I would oppose removing it for one very good reason: experience. Every year, we experience something where we have to pay for that isn't budgeted. It's an emergency. It's unknown. It's whatever it may be. But every year, we have to pay something, and we haven't had a contingency in a couple of years. And we've had to dig into other operating costs. So I don't think we need to, I hope we don't rush and start eliminating things when in fact we'll be right back here on this floor saying, what are we going to do now? Are we eliminating this? So I would caution against that, too. Thank you. I want to also give you a story that I use maybe too much, and that is as an example of service level delivery in their community. I believe the community looks very good. It looks clean. It looks fresh. It looks, things are being done. And what I want to relate that to the park and rec department, if you will. When you look at all the parks we have, we have more parks per capita than any other city in the state of Wisconsin. We have a lot of right-of-way that mostly, some of it isn't ours, but we take care of it because the state won't. So we have seven, correct me if I'm wrong, we have seven employees taking care of this entire town that is not street-wise or sidewalk-wise or sewer-wise and so forth. Seven employees, and it looks beautiful. So I only bring that up because I really believe that they're doing a great job. But more importantly, we can't cut that with seven employees covering the whole town. It's just an example of how efficient, I believe, we all believe, our services are. Thank you.
Bruce, I just want to add on that. If you go back when you were mayor before and look at the size of the police and fire department we had back then as compared to now, I think it's probably almost half of what it was before. And another thing, like you mentioned, is the size area-wise, the city of Superior. That's always been a problem for police, especially when you're, you know, when you're responding to back up a fellow officer. You can only cut back so much.
Counselor Olson?
Yeah, I've just got a few questions. Gene, I had sent you an email, and I thank you for addressing that to all the department heads. I got twenty-five responses to all the stuff that I had, questions about. First of all, is the, is the level of reserves, is that synonymous with contingency? Is that, or is it a different fund?
It is. And I'll give you an example. With this three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand that we've got in the budget for twenty-sixteen, if we didn't need to tap into that at all, all of that goes into reserves when the year closes out. So if we have roughly eight-and-a-half million, which we do right now, that would bump that up to eight-point-nine, which may actually be getting on, starting to get on the excessive level. Not too much, but we wouldn't want to be generating more reserves than that, but you're, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that the two are the same. So I've got a few questions here. First of all, I'm going to be a little bit more liberal, Mayor, as to how I'd like to see a couple of things done. The park and recs, yes. The parks look great. You've got seven employees. I do have a problem with the cutbacks that we did in the last year or so to the mowing of properties around town. And although the city is relatively in good shape to the eye, there are areas that we did a lot better job of years ago when we, whether it was, we had more budget money for those things. But in the district that I'm at, I wasn't real pleased with the idea of outsourcing the cutting of the city right-of-ways, the city street, particularly Sixtieth Street between Hammond and the Bryant School. And I apologize if some of you didn't get this. I've had problems with my server the last two days at work. And so if you did get it, I'm repeating myself. If you didn't, I don't believe that we should be outsourcing a lawn-cutting service to people that were outside my back door with a twenty-inch push mower, trying to mow the right-of-way by the hockey rink out there that Jerry Engel King has bought, and being out there with a thirty-six-inch craftsman riding lawnmower. I would rather see more money put into that budget so that we can go back to what we did. Mary, you and I have had the conversation about the hockey rink, and the Douglas County had it before, and we've always gotten a cut. There was right-of-ways along some of the railroad tracks in other areas. Years ago, I had a fellow in South Spear that had hay fever that was real bad, and you took care of that. And I'll thank you back five years ago for that. So if, that's something I'd like to see put in, into the budget so that, not to cut the service, but to extend it if we can. I know we've got ordinances and all that, but go ahead.
I asked the building inspection support staff to send you the newest rendition of the weed abatement ordinance, Counselor. But I want to be clear. Our park crews still mow the road right-of-ways. We, I think the question you and I talked about is whether we ought to be mowing property we're not responsible for, which in my opinion, we ought not to. But we still mow all city road right-of-ways that are built. We don't sometimes mow the ones that are platted but not built.
Right.
So are you talking about the former Bryant skating area now?
Well, I'm actually talking about throughout the whole city, that we used to do it all the time, and then we would bill what the property owner was per square foot, anything over twelve inches. What I'm asking, Mary, is to get that put back into your budget so that we can allow for those things to be done again. If nothing more, to take away some of the blighted areas that you see around town, whether it's a safety issue with kids or whatever the case may be. What my intention here is to try and put more into your budget to go back at those things to ensure that we've got properties that are mowed. And I understand the ordinance.
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, the ten of you agreed to the ordinance just eight months or a year ago. So I think, you know, you're wise if you want to bring that back and adjust it.
Okay.
I think the system we have in place right now is working.
I don't agree, I don't disagree that it isn't. The purpose of this meeting, I thought, was for comments for the counselors to bring stuff back to the budget. I'm trying to help the city in Superior as to if we could put more money into your budget from someplace else, not out of the contingency, but if we look at other areas, if there were cuts that had to be made in other areas and not essential services, not by any means. But the fact that we did it before, to me, as a, I understand the ordinance. I get all that. I'm not sure why we have two weed commissioners. But, so when it gets down to what my goal here is to make the city more presentable to developers as they come into our community, we've had an influx of the people that, right now, I'm going to use the Quick Trips for an instance because they're all over the place. But that was a market niche. They didn't need to look at the area that they were going to develop in because there are areas that were already developed and undeveloped. What I'm looking at is if we're trying to attract people, businesses, to retain people in this community, that the community cosmetically looks as best it can. Mayor, when you came into the office the first time, the first thing you did was got rid of all the weeds on East Second Street. And that was a big, big thing. Because in your district, you know, the Hollywood sidewalks and the roads and all that. So it's just, it's a suggestion. That's all. So the other thing that I, with the, I'd like to see that done, if possible. The other thing that, with the landfill situation, we had talked during all that process of possibly getting electronic fund transferring so that people could go on a budget. And Chris, thanks for the information that you gave me, but it didn't answer my question. Is there room in the budget somewhere to have software that will, besides online banking, but that will allow our citizens, the elderly, the people that aren't as well-off as maybe others in the community, to be able to pay a monthly fee rather than the quarterly fee? So these people that are on fixed incomes can budget monthly to a point that, you know, the quarterly fee, when it comes into the same time as the stormwater runoff, the wastewater, it becomes a big fee, and if people don't budget for that, then it seems like a big drawback on those people. And at that point in time, they may have to choose between what they need for their personal health, whatever the case may be, or if they're not paying one bill because they have to pay another. So that's just a very small thing. If we could look at that to see if that's possible to get some sort of electronic fund transferring to be done monthly.
Yeah, I'll just do a real quick answer. We'll be bringing the landfill budget back, let's see, I would say within two months. So why don't we, we'll look into our muni billing system that we have for all of those utilities, and we'll just try to get a cost estimate for that, and we can bring it back for you.
Okay. Thank you. One of the other ones, then, was we've had the problem with the SBC and the DA, the Spear Business Center and Development Association funding. And I expressed the point that that's been an ongoing thing for a long time, and we don't really know what the answer to that is, where the money's going to come from, if it's coming from anywhere, if it's something that we have to at some point in time determine that it is unretrievable. So if nothing else, it has to be put aside. But if there was an option, and I realize that it's got to come through the county, too, but just a very small, whatever that amount was, could very easily be added to the contingency fund because it's a debt that's long overdue. And I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that you'd apply it to somewhere now other than, does that make sense?
It's completely separate from our general fund. And I would suggest, just because it has been kind of hanging out there for a while, that maybe the item gets referred back somewhere for discussion and resolution. I don't think it's necessarily a general fund budget. I don't think it's necessarily a general fund budget item, but it's been out there for a while, and
Yep.
I think everybody would like to get it resolved.
Yeah, one way or the other. The other one that I do have some concerns about is the amount of money that we're contributing to Positively Superior. It's a private publication, and Mayor, you and I had a little bit of a discussion on it via email and stuff. And I'm not sure that we should be investing so much of the, if it's coming out of the TDF, which is, could be used for a lot of other things. But it's a business magazine. I don't doubt that one bit. And the investors in it, there are partners in it. And if you look at the ads in it, it's geared for business. There's no doubt about that. And I would rather see a reduction of what the city pays into it, and put a little bit more weight on, per se, the Chamber of Commerce, so they can do their due diligence and reach out to the people in their organization that want to invest in a private publication. If it was a public publication that benefited the city as to the taxpayers, I'd be more comfortable with that. But We spend a lot of money, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but I would surely like to see the thought of that, that if not now, in the future, as Counselor Sweeney is saying, that we look at places that, not cutting any essential services anywhere, but preserving the budget moving forward. So, thank you for listening to me. I just, I wanted to get those out, and those are, those are some concerns that I've heard of on the street. So, appreciate it.
Sure. If I could do just a quick response, just something in general. This is, this budget is now presented to you as councilors. So, this is your time. If you want to change things up, this is the time to do it. Tonight, you, you can change things. You need six votes to change anything. Once you pass the budget, you need seven votes to change it. So, that's just an FYI. It does start with the mayor's executive budget on September 1st, and then it goes into your hands. So, now's the time to discuss. If you like it, great. If you want to change it, time to vote and see if you can get the changes.
Counselor Sweeney?
It can also be delayed, correct?
It can. You don't have to adopt it today. If you want to bring it back to the October 6th, that's completely fine.
I'm in favor of delaying it till I can look more thoroughly at this, but I'll make a recommendation that we hold the budget until the following, whatever that date is.
Okay.
Motion of second to delay the budget discussion or adoption until October 6th. Is that the motion?
Is that the date?
That, yes.
That's the date. Right, Bruce.
Motion by Counsel Sweeney and second by Counsel Olson.
We would just need to have everything kind of lined up about a week before, so we can get it out on the agenda. So, if you have any specific questions for me or for Mayor, just let us know.
Counsel McDonald?
I also have questions with Positively Superior. It is a privately, not public. And to pay them $2,700 every two months, plus pay for our ads, and plus give them a stipend from the TDF is kind of a little bit much, being it's private. You know, we pay for our ads, and we should, but I don't see that we should keep giving them an extra little bonus. So, I see a little bit of cutting right there, but that's one of my opinions. Thank you.
Yeah, a different question, based, going back to the contingency fund. Is there any way a contingency fund can be carried from year to year? Or, for example, you're talking about taking that money and putting it into the reserve. Could that money, if it's still there, be used to offset the expenses for, for next year?
The only way you could do that is if you overspend the following year's budget and then remove it from the reserves. Everything lapses at the end of the year. If there's not only the contingency, but if we have more revenue than expenses, that balance, along with the contingency, rolls into reserves. Then we start all over again, brand-new numbers beginning of the next year. So, nothing, nothing just stays there to be carried over to the next year.
Any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 7.2, excuse me, Planning Director Cirque is requesting approval to extend the Montreal Peer Facility Use Agreement with Northeast Midwest Institute through 2020.
What is the pleasure?
Motion of second.
You've heard a motion of second, discussion. Counsel Sweeney?
I saw in that, there's a $5,000 fee, and the wording on the contract seems to be, seems to say, can be spent as the city deems fit. Does that go into the general, or where does that five grand go? It isn't a lot of money, and I understand that, but it was the wording of it, and the, was somewhat unusual to me.
Jack, it does go to the general fund, as far as I know. It does go to the general fund.
As far as you know?
As far as I know. I think, and I can be, I think I can clarify this a little bit. We, this was kind of a interesting project when we put it together. We were paid $75,000 at the beginning of this lease, which was to be set aside, and I think for whatever we deem fit. And I think that language is kind of carried over for that, and that's why that is there.
I'll just read it. It says, the budget source, rents received or allocated as deemed necessary by the city. Well, if it goes to the general fund, that's fine.
Yes.
If that's where it goes, that's fine. Okay, but doesn't, the wording is
That is where I think it's been receiveded over the years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to set a public hearing October 20th for the 2016 through 2020 CDBG consolidated, consolidated plan, and the 2016 CDBG action plan.
Motion approved.
Heard the motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
10.2 is a resolution of the city of Superior approving the report of the redevelopment authority of the city of Superior regarding the development agreement with PAC Investments LLC and the Bashan Group, Inc.
Motion approved.
Heard the motion of second, discussion. Counsel Sweeney?
Tell me why we have this third party. Is the PAC the same as the other organization?
There's a lease back.
Right.
So, there's an entity that, there's an entity that will hold the lease, and then there's an entity
Isolate.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Does that, that doesn't affect the city in any way financially?
Absolutely not.
Okay. So, we're protected there?
Yes.
Even though they have that
And we always put those two entities, because we want to make sure we have somebody that has, because sometimes those LLCs don't have anything.
Right.
So, we want to get, we want to have a second listed to get something.
But they're one and the same, basically.
They are. But there's money in one and not in the other.
Right, you got it. Thank you.
So, motion at second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
10.3 is a resolution of the city of Superior approving the report of the redevelopment authority of the city of Superior and a cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority of the city of Superior in connections with Hock Boot, Hock's Boots LLC, and Epicurian Cutting Services LLC.
Heard the motion of second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, we stand adjourned.